I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is Thursday, February 22nd. It's the regular Board of Education meeting at 6:00. And before we begin, we have to, our current treasurer cannot be here with us this evening as he's attending his son's tournament game. And so we have to elect a treasurer pro temp. And I'm going to nominate Keith Kleinfeldter.
Second.
So we have a, or may I call the roll?
Can he call the roll?
Yes. We have, yeah, so we've got the motion and a second.
Yep.
Any discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
And Ms. Gunther?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Well, let's hope that the Rams have some good luck tonight. That Steve can come back a winner.
Dakota East.
All right, can we have a roll call? Mr. Kleinfeldter, please.
Yeah, Mr. Young?
Here.
Mrs. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Kleinfeldter, yes, here. Mr. Beckman?
Here.
Mr. Gunther?
Here.
Okay, everyone, please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Conkle, would you like to review the agenda, please?
Yes, sir. Tonight, we have a presentation from the curriculum department. Followed by that, we have a couple items on the superintendent's section. There are two overnight field trips for your approval. There's also a preventive maintenance contract for your approval. There are a few personal items, and then Mr. Castater, since he's not here, donations. There's one donation for your approval, and then obviously the monthly documents he puts out, investments, and then the cast summer report. So those are the highlights of the meeting tonight.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Beckman, second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Webb? Any discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Craig Young?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll vote yes as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to the minutes. If you had an opportunity to look the minutes over, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 25th board meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're ready for our curriculum department presentation?
Yes, before we get into our curriculum department presentation, I just want to say a thank you to Jake and Tracy for their efforts in leading our curriculum department. I've been very impressed the last three or four years with that department, what that department has done. So I just want to say publicly, thank you for your efforts. Looking forward to the presentation tonight and celebrate some of the good things we're doing in our district. So that being said, Mr. Richards, you are up. Thank you for presenting.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Conkle, and thank you, Board of Education, on behalf of Tracy and myself. Always a pleasure to come and talk to this Board of Education. Just, you know, obviously to celebrate some of the things that we're doing, but also to inform you all and inform our public of some of the stuff that happens behind the scenes that we don't necessarily know about. So, without further ado, our goals tonight are to share state report card information from 2022 and 2023. We've had a long while to look it over at this point. To share like district, so similar district Ohio State test comparison. To share SAVE Students and Aaron's Law programming updates. And to share an overview of a tool that we use every day in everything that we do called ABRE. So first of all, I know I always like to start any presentation, any conversation about, especially about student data, with this question. What's our purpose as a school district? Give you 10 seconds to formulate your own thoughts on that. And then, of course, since I have the microphone, I'll share my thoughts on this. And it's very simple. Our purpose as a school district is to grow kids. And that's to grow kids in every facet of growth, academically, socially, emotionally, to build character. That's our job as a school district. And it's especially important to keep that in mind as we begin to look at this data. I also want to point out that this data is a snapshot. It's a snapshot. It's a one-time picture of where our students are at academically. And it represents a whole lot of dedicated effort from our wonderful staff. And so I'm going to give that public shout out. I wish I could shout it from every rooftop in the community, that our staff is a wonderful staff and they work their tails off to make sure that our kids have what they need to grow as young learners. So, without further ado here, Ohio State Report Card 2022, 2023. You have two packets in front of you, two different packets. The first one is titled Ohio State Report Card Like District Comparison. The state, it gives us 20 like districts based on a number of factors. Socioeconomics, demographics, size, funding, a number of different factors. I can't even pretend to explain how they calculate these. But you'll see those districts listed, not only in your packet, but then here in this presentation shortly. And we'll highlight some of the great information that we've got based on this data and how we compare it to those school districts. You've also got another packet that is a longitudinal summary of state report card data going all the way back to 2006. So thank you, Mr. Young. You actually provided some of this data. And then I combed the archives of the ODE website for the rest of it to fill in some of the gaps. But it offers a longitudinal look at how we've performed as a district on the various tests. Now, just a note about that packet, we won't get too much in depth into that in this presentation. There's just not enough time for that. But a note on that, the test changed, obviously. And anybody who's been in education during that period of time, you know that it's changed. It's gone by various names. The standards behind the test, the test is based on, have changed multiple times in every content area. And so that's an important consideration to remember when you're looking at these comparisons. So first of all, and I presented this back in September, I believe. This is just a general overview of the report card and the different components that now are reported via that structure. We've got an achievement component, progress component, early literacy component, college career, workforce, and military readiness component, and that's reported only. It's not, quote unquote, scored on the report card. The graduation component and the gap closing component. And all of that goes into the Ohio Department of Education and workforce. They've recently undergone a facelift, so it's now ODU, not ODE. The ODU calculations to produce that overall rating. So you'll see here, our LSD, Ross Local School District, scores in each of those components. Four stars in achievement, four stars in progress, and then five stars each in gap closing, graduation, and early literacy. And very happy to report once again, this is not the first time you've seen this, that the Ross Local School District earned a five-star rating on the Ohio State Report Card in 2022 and 2023. And that's certainly something to be celebrated, especially because we are the only five-star district in Butler County. So the only five-star district, so all of our buildings contributed to that five-star rating. So that is something that should be applauded. And congratulations to mostly our staff and our students for that achievement. So, jumping into the like district comparison. And here I've listed all of the like districts, so this is the first half. And the second half will be on the next screen. And what I've done here is I've added in the per pupil expenditure and then the state and local funding per pupil that each of those districts receives. And so you'll see, this is ranked from lowest per pupil all the way down to highest per pupil. So we sit at 10th on that list of 21 schools at $10,664 per pupil. You'll see that connected to the state and local funds that we receive. There's the rest of the like school districts. And you'll recognize some of those school districts as local. I'll point out that this is a common mistake, that this one right here, Northwest Local, is not the one right next door. That is Northwest Local in Stark County. There are a couple of neighbors here. We've got Madison in our county. We've got Southwest Local, so Harrison right next door. And then we've got Brookville Local, right up the street. I think that's, and then Valley View, and then Wayne Local up in Warren County. And then the rest of them are from all over the state. And once again, that's based on a number of factors the state uses to set up these like school districts for comparison. So, in terms of our OST score comparison, you'll see these numbers here. These are actually how we ranked comparatively speaking to those, it's a group of 21 schools, so us and 20 other school districts. So I'll give you a second to look that over. And then, once again, in that packet titled Like District Comparison, you can see all of the actual scores from each of those school districts per content area. And then, I want to also point out down here that the per pupil expenditure, that is, we are the 5th, I mean, I'm sorry, the 10th lowest per pupil expenditure. And we are the 10th, we're right in the middle in terms of our state and local funding as well. So some very good results there in terms of what we do and the bang that we get for our buck, if you will. So now we'll get into the different content areas. And what I've done here is created these charts. And you'll see the blue lines are our district in terms of our performance. You'll see the grade levels, and then at the high school level, you'll see the actual test, the test that students took.
Now, this is percentage of students proficient?
Proficient, yes. This is based on, so right over here, this is proficiency. So you'll see that, for instance, in third grade, 84% of Ross Local School students scored proficient or higher. That does include accomplished and advanced categories. And then the red is an average of those like school districts. So you'll see that across the board, nearly, on each of these content areas, we are above that like school district average. And sometimes far above it, which is very impressive. So that is English Language Arts. And then next, we'll have math. Once again, math, we were above every other like, or above that average in every single grade level, every test. And once again, far above it in, for instance, third grade math. And eighth grade. And then in algebra as well. Next up, we have science. So only three tested grades or subject areas in science on the Ohio State test. Fifth grade, eighth grade, and biology. And then finally, we'll have social studies. In social studies, there are only two tests now at the high school level, both at the high school level, American history and American government. And that's, once again, just a snapshot of how we fared on this 2022, 2023 school year Ohio State Report Card. So I'll stop there. Anybody have any questions at this point? I know the packets are full of a lot, a lot of data.
Jake, how many schools are in the like districts?
There are 20 comparison schools, and then us makes 21, yes. And then also, I'm glad you said something, Mrs. Webb. At the end of that packet, I've also thrown in there the list of Butler County schools. So this is by school building, not by district. And so it's a very long list. And you'll see our school buildings are highlighted in yellow. And our school buildings are on the first page, which is wonderful news. Not only on the first page, but near the top of the first page, which is fantastic. And so that's a comparison of how we fared against our local school districts.
And Jake, that's every school in Butler County, right?
Every school in Butler County.
Okay.
And also, and those of you who haven't spent much time with this data, when you see the word elementary, I'd like to say that not all elementaries are created equal in terms of grade levels. And so sometimes you get an elementary that has K through 5, sometimes it's K through 3, like us, or pre-K through 3. So just note that when you start digging into that data, that sometimes the elementary doesn't compare, and same with middle school, same with high school, actually. Sometimes you get 10th through 12th grade in high school, whereas we've got 9th through 12th grade, middle school. There are all different variations in middle school or junior highs. So that's just an important consideration when you look at that data. But once again, the highlight there is that all of our school buildings are near the top of that first page.
Have you broken it down by test area? Looking at the county, also like third grade language arts, how do we compare to the Butler County?
We've looked at that data, yeah. I don't have a nice, neat present, like, you know, a document to give you.
I'm assuming we would be at the top, obviously.
Yeah, yes. Yeah.
So, tell us a little bit about, and maybe you're going to do this later, a little bit about when the, well, first of all, what time of year are you getting the data now?
So, data is a funny, and you know this, Mr. Young, from your experience with this. So we get results from these tests, raw data, pretty soon after. So, for instance, we just got data from the fall administration of the end-of-course exams at the high school. Since we're on block schedule, they take those in the fall. And we just got that data over the last, I don't know, stretched over the last four weeks, give or take.
Different time.
Yeah. But what's important to consider in that is that that's raw data. And I'm not being accusatory at all, but the state then, you know, for lack of a better term, scrubs that data. So kids who have, you know, have a medical waiver, maybe, alternate assessment. So that data never really matches what comes out eventually on the state report card, which happens in the fall, after the school year.
So, from the spring testing, so all the other grades are done in the spring, right?
Yes.
So, when are you getting that data back from the state?
It usually...
August, or?
So we get that raw, we can look in our, in the tide system, so the testing system. We can look at results, the state, you know, sets a release date. And then we can go into our system internally and look at that data, probably a window of four to six weeks after the test administration closes. So we can start to look at it there. But once again, the caveat is that it's raw data. And it's, I always look at it, you know, with a grain of salt. And then the official state release data comes out typically in the fall for the previous school year.
And then you're, are you meeting with teachers, like meeting with grade-level teachers?
Absolutely.
Do you review the results and then help inform their instructions?
Absolutely. And you know this, once again, from your experience, that test data release day is a big day for staff members. And once they know that it's coming out, it's, you know, it's immediate. Staff members like to look at that data to see how their students performed. But then, we have strategically, through our professional learning days, set up chances for teachers to meet with each other, to look through their data. And the platform that the state provides is really, it's become really slick in terms of you can break it down by standard, break it down by kid even, once those results are in. And you can really look at, you know, not only successes, so where you really nailed it, where your kids really achieved well. But you can also look at some of the gaps and then relate that back to, obviously, instructional practices. We, in the curriculum department, you know, take a look at that and then look for gaps in the curriculum in each content area. But that's what, so, for instance, and I, the months are going to, I'm going to mess this up, but probably October and November, teachers start to look at that data and then set up. The state's also developed a readiness assessment system. So teachers can access that at any time of the year. And they can actually pull old questions from OST tests. And they can customize their own assessments to give as progress monitoring assessments throughout the year to their students. And once again, our teachers do a great job of relating that back to maybe some of the gaps that they'd seen in a previous test administration. So a lot of analysis happens. We don't have time right now to get into value-added, but that's another component of this. And that measures the growth of students throughout the year, or over the course of a year. So that's also very informative for our staff members.
Do you have any information on the performance index specifically?
So in your packet, let me get one second.
Is that on the longitudinal summary?
So if you look at the like districts...
Yeah.
You can go to, there's a page dedicated to performance index. And you'll see that we ranked 7th, I believe, kind of, yeah, 7th in terms of those like districts in our performance index.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
And then I do not have the performance index on the Butler County report, but I can certainly add that.
Jake, do you know offhand whether or not this, like in previous years, has gone up or down our performance index?
I have not looked at previous years in terms of the like districts yet.
I'd say we're probably pretty close.
Probably pretty close with that, with the 95 point.
95 is not bad. What's the highest you can score in the performance index?
It varies year to year.
120?
No, it varies year to year. It's not set. And so it's based on the top 2% of school districts in Ohio, their achievement. And then they calculate the performance index based on that.
Okay.
So that's also a funny thing to keep, it's, yeah, it's a moving target.
Yeah. I'm impressed with the early literacy.
Yeah, oh, it's, yeah, knocking on the park.
Yeah, that's kind of a tough one to nail.
Yeah, and I'm going to give kudos to Mrs. Wright, sitting right over there, because that is her wheelhouse. And she takes that very seriously, and she's a terrific educational leader in that department specifically. And also some of our early literacy gurus in the audience right now, and all their colleagues. They do a great job. Yeah, so thank you for that, everybody. All right, moving on, this is just an informative piece for the SAVE Students and Aaron's Law. These two laws went into effect this past summer, sent a lot of school districts scrambling because they were very real and there were very real implementation pieces that needed to happen this school year. And as you all know, getting, you know, an entire district on board in the course of, you know, a couple of months is a really tough thing to do. But once again, our staff has done a great job. We are currently in the implementation process for both of these, SAVE Students and Aaron's Law. And I'll explain what those are here shortly. So the SAVE Students Act, that's Ohio revise code 3313.60. It requires one hour or one standard class period per year programming in social inclusion, violence prevention, and suicide prevention. So each of those areas, we have to provide programming for one hour or one standard class period for grades 6 through 12. And so we, the counselors and I, the counselors have done a great job of looking through this information. We meet on a monthly basis. And we made the decision this past fall to go with this program. It's Sandy Hook Promise. And we're going to explain some of the beauty of this program. Number one, most importantly, it's free. So it's free of charge. It is approved. It's one of the approved courses by the state of Ohio, so we have to pick an approved course or apply for approval. So we went with Sandy Hook Promise. And one of the great things about Sandy Hook Promise is there's no set curriculum. And so what that means is that there's not a scope and sequence that you have to follow. And so part of the law states that in order to satisfy this law, you have to follow whatever curriculum you choose with fidelity. So if there are 10 lessons for social inclusion, you have to implement all 10 lessons, or else you don't get, quote unquote, credit for the social inclusion portion of this law. So with Sandy Hook, and Sandy Hook explained this to us very early on when we were meeting with them, they don't have a set curriculum. It's rather a collection of resources. And so they have a, what I call an easy lift option. And so this essentially boils down to one video and one activity that staff and students watch and then do. And that then fulfills that requirement for each of those areas. And so we've, as, all of our buildings have completed the social inclusion portion. That was the, you probably heard "start with hello," that phrase. That was the social inclusion portion. And over the next month or two, we will complete the violence prevention. With Sandy Hook, that's called "say something." And then for the suicide prevention, it's called "say something, suicide prevention." And so we will be rolling that out over the next, about six weeks. There is an opt-out for this, so families, if they so choose, can opt out of this instruction. And so we've communicated that to families, and we'll continue to communicate that as we approach each, essentially each window for each of these areas. Aaron's Law, Aaron's Law is a law that also passed this past summer. We are the 35th state, I believe, to adopt this legislation. And it's designed to prevent child sexual abuse and dating and sexual violence. And so the law requires us to instruct in prevention of sexual abuse and dating and sexual violence for students and staff, K through 12. And so, I'm tired of trying to explain the logic of this because I can't really explain the logic of this. But K through 6, students have to receive one hour of focused training on sexual abuse prevention annually. So every single student gets one hour every single year, kindergarten through 6th grade. And then for the 7th to 12th grade, they've banded it, so it's a 7th to 12th grade band. And those students in that band have to get one hour of focused programming on dating and sexual violence prevention during that timeframe. And so we, as a district, I'll show you here, we as a district have chosen to, like a lot of districts in the area, have chosen to implement that programming through our ninth-grade health class because every student in the district takes that health class. And so we had, I'll show you here in a second.
So you only have to do an hour in grades 9 through 12 at one of the grade levels?
Seven through 12. Yes.
All seven through 12.
They have to do one hour.
Any other grade levels?
One hour once, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so let that...
So you're doing it at the ninth grade?
At the ninth grade, yes. And there is no grandfather, or, yeah, we don't have to retroactively provide it to 10th through 12th at this point. So that was a question early on, like, what do we do with those guys, those kids? And the state said, no, don't worry about it. Start now. And so that's how we've chosen. Once again, it's an easier path for our staff and students to do it in a class that we already have set up for everybody to take.
Right.
So you'll see this timeline, we've been planning the K through 6. This is by design. We want to make sure that the programming that we offer obviously matches our community standards, matches our community values. And so we have partnered with the Council on Child Abuse. And so they are out of the Talbert House in Hamilton County. And so the Council on Child Abuse, once again, they've already started this at the high school level. They've come in twice. So the health class is a quarter-length class at the high school level. So they came in in the first quarter and the second quarter, and they're about to come in in a couple of weeks. And it's a single class period. They come in and they present. You know, I watched the presentation. It's a good, solid presentation. Revolves mostly around consent and about respect for each other. So they presented that at the high school level. And once again, families can opt out of this instruction. So we, in fact, I just sent the message today to families who have ninth graders in health class right now. They'll get the programming here in two weeks, and they can fill out that opt-out form if they so choose. The K through 6 instructional model, we took a little bit longer on this. We met a number of times with representatives from the Council on Child Abuse, mostly to look at what that programming included. And they actually came out to our last professional learning day on Tuesday and presented to the entire staff about the content of the presentations. And that was, once again, by design, just to make sure that our staff members understand what students are going to see and what they might be talking about as a result of that. And then that representative from COCA also addressed the protocol for mandated reporting. So as a public school employee, whether you work in a classroom, on a bus, in the cafeteria, whatever, you are a mandated reporter. whatever, you are mandated reporter, and that's a potentially intimidating thing. So if a child discloses any information about potential abuse, then you have to follow that mandated reporting protocol. So we touched on that on Tuesday at the PD Day, just once again, to make sure that all staff understand what is gonna happen and what they need to do if they get information from a child about any of this. And so in our K through six, and this is another great thing about this programming, K through three will receive one presentation that focuses on child sex abuse, and that term is awfully, it feels maybe misidentified for what the presentation actually is. It's a lot about, you know, good touch, bad touch, what it means to be loved, not neglected, et cetera. And then the fourth through sixth grade students will receive a program on bullying. And so once again, this is all state-approved. The state viewed their presentation and approved it as counting for compliance with Aaron's Law.
Hey Jake, I just wanna emphasize that the content is age-specific.
Absolutely.
So I wanna make sure that our parents are clear that this is age-appropriate.
Yes.
Okay. It's important.
And then all of our staff, per this law, all staff have to complete training in child sex abuse prevention. And the Ohio School Safety Center just released a training module about four, six weeks ago, give or take, and so I think we're up to like 200-plus staff members who have already completed that. And it's a series of videos, and once again, focuses a lot on mandated reporting protocol.
Is that a one-time thing or every year?
It's every year, yeah. Yeah. And then all staff also were asked to review a mandated reporter, this is, we locally produced this via our ABRE learning module, which I'll show you about here shortly, a mandated reporter protocol that was specific to Ross local schools. So it was, who do I contact in my school building if something happens? Which leads us to just a brief overview of ABRE. I know there were some questions about the purpose of ABRE. It is a data solution. You know, as you probably are all aware, much of our lives are run by data, or at least informed by data. School districts are no different. We've got data about everything. And so sometimes sifting through that data and navigating that data to make data-informed decisions is really tough, because you, you know, and I'll show you here. These are just a snapshot of some of the different data platforms that we've used. You see everybody's favorite paper and pencil, but then you've got various different data platforms for different reasons. And so this was based on a 2020-2021 Tech Stack assessment that we completed with ABRE to see where some of the redundancies were, to see where some of the trouble was with all of these different data platforms, and having to navigate through all of them to make some data-informed decisions. And so all of these, most of these came together, consolidated into our ABRE platform. And so what ABRE does is it improves our operational efficiency, so it essentially has become a one-stop shop for a lot of what we do on the day-to-day basis, or on an annual basis in looking at some of the data that you have there in front of you. It increases stakeholder engagement. So all of our staff have access to this at varying levels, but teachers can look up, you know, student individualized education plans, for instance, or written education plans for those identified as gifted. They can see those at the stroke of a button, instead of having to dig through or log into a different platform. We can make confident decisions based on that data, because it's compiled in one place, instead of, once again, having to, you know, run around to all these different platforms and trying to compile that ourselves. And then that allows us to reinvest in what matters most, and that's our staff and our students.
Does this replace Progress Book?
It doesn't replace Progress Book, so it connects to Progress Book, so it syncs to Progress Book, and I'll show you that here shortly with the ABRE 360 that we just rolled out in January. So it, staff members, family members can view Progress Book information via ABRE, but because Progress Book is closely tied or run by the EMIS and Student Information System, ABRE cannot replace that. So this is, ABRE is a one-stop shop for student assessment data, staff-student profile information, professional learning courses, and that's, for instance, every year, staff have to complete compliance training. We used to offer that through Public School Works, which was a paid vendor, and so this has replaced that. Curricular materials, student plans, so once again, students on IEPs or with IEPs, 504s, or written education plans, those are all housed in ABRE. We still use SAME goal to produce IEPs and 504s, but then, once again, operate in SAME goal sync. So those plans are, those final plans are available for staff to see, which is so important, you know, if you get a room of 25 kids and, once again, have to go to a different platform to look at what the goals are, what the requirements are of those plans, that can be cumbersome. Behavior incident data, so our buildings report all behavior incidents on the daily basis. Teachers can report behavior incidents, and it goes through a streamlined process to administration to handle. And then staff plans, so the professional development plans for staff certification is all housed in ABRE, and it's just a really clean way to do it, as opposed to years past when it was a little clunkier. So this, and yes, those are my children, I've gotten their permission to share this. I won't share any of their data, but our newest tool is ABRE 360, so we ruled this out in January, after, once again, talking with ABRE for a couple of months about it. Not a lot of school districts have this yet. It's still a relatively new tool in terms of the ABRE platform. But what ABRE 360 allows families to do is to view aloud the important data and important information about their students in one place. So instead of having to log into Progress Book, instead of having to, you know, search their email for an attachment, you know, with a written education plan, they can go here, they can redeem a token, a unique token for each of their students, they connect to it once, and then that connection is live for the rest of that student's career in Ross local schools. And so, for instance, I can log in via my family login, and I can click on Rowan, Hattie, or my youngest Finn, view their profile, and I can immediately get access to historical data. So this isn't just current data, historical data about currently their Ohio State Test scores and their NWA MAP scores, which we use to measure progress throughout the year. And so then if you click on View Details, like I said, I don't have this pulled up right now, click on View Details, it also breaks it down by content area, by standard strand, so you can start to look very, very focused picture of where your kid is struggling, where your kid's exceeding expectations, et cetera. So really, really a cool tool. And that also will satisfy, there was a new law on the books, I don't have the ORC language on that, but that all school districts have to inform families of state test results by June 30th. And the irony of that is that the state never actually sends us the reports until sometime in August or September, but the legislation said that's not cutting it, and so they passed this law. And we, once again, were all left scrambling, saying, well, crap, we're gonna have to have a lot of extra days to compile that information and do some grunt work to get it out. Well, this solves that problem. So when we get the test results, it automatically streams into ABRE 360, and poof, there they are.
What kind of parent participation are you getting?
So we're, I actually just checked the metrics on that, we're up to around 700 families have created access accounts to this. We're at 900 and something, unique tokens have been redeemed, so that's per student. And we're gonna continue to push that communication to make sure that families are aware of it.
How are you getting that out to the public right now? Is that through Final forms?
So it's been through Final forms, you know, the email that Final forms produces, it was in the newsletter in January. It, a letter, an individual letter went home with that unique access token to each family in the district. It went home with kids K through five, and then we mailed it to families six through 12. And so obviously, there are gaps in that, and we'll continue to push that. I've had several families reach out and say, I never got one, and I, it's as simple as I download their letter and shoot it to them via email.
And I assume that teachers are telling them about it during parent-teacher conferences?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. So we're trying to hit it at all, from all levels of communication, and we'll continue to do so. Once again, you can also look at, I won't tell you which child this is, and I'm just glad that they, you know, the grades are decent, but you can also see academic progress. So you can log in, click on the student's name, click on Grades, the Grades tab up at the top, and in this, you can actually click on each class and go through, and it reflects exactly what's in Progress Book. So it shows what's missing, shows what's marked as late or complete, shows the scores at the assignment level.
So it's a complete integration then with Progress Book?
It's a complete integration on the family-facing side, yes. On the teacher-facing side, we still have to input the data into Progress Book, yes, yes. And so once again, the beauty of this for families is that, and I don't know, you know, the parents of Ross local school students in this room, logging into Progress Book sometimes is a tough thing, you know, you gotta save the password, save the username, and it's one more platform. So this, you know, has this comprehensive view, makes it easier on our families to view this important student data. And then finally, you have access, so if a student is on an IEP, or has an IEP, or a 504, or a written education plan, once those are completed, whether it's with the IEPs and 504s in SAME goal, or our written education plan is actually in ABRE, the completed plans are then available for view in this ABRE 360. And that.
What's our, do you have any idea what like the per pupil cost is of that product?
I do not know.
I didn't, yeah, I don't know.
So this was not?
But we were able to get rid of several others.
Yes.
So.
There was a cost savings, yes.
Yeah.
And I think what you're about to point out is this ABRE 360 was already part of our package. We did not pay an additional dime for this component. Once again, it's a relatively new feature from ABRE, and they're, you know, their development team is on it. We contact them and say, hey, can you add something like this? And within three to five days, they've got something, like our course on mandated reporting. I think we asked them in December, mid-December, and actually, one of the partners of the company produced it in like 14 days and got it back to us and said, here you go. And that was a customized professional learning module for our staff about Ross local schools' content. So they're a very responsive company, and just a lot, and there's a lot more that we can do with this. And so we continue to work on ways to streamline that communication, because we all know how important it is that our families are invested in their students' education, and this is a great tool to be able to promote that.
Are we doing written report cards still, or is it all just electronic now?
Electronic, we, I think we still print.
We print.
We print at elementary level, yeah, yeah.
Grades what?
All electronic.
K to what?
K-3 are printed.
And sent home.
Are there, I mean, it's electronic and print, or just print?
So it's an electronic report card, it's just not available because of the standard space report card.
Okay.
All the content.
I was kinda getting there, okay. So we're using the standard space report card still, K to three?
Yes.
Okay.
And with that, any additional questions? It's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Good work. And that doesn't even scratch the surface of what's happening.
Let me ask you this. So courses of study, do we have a curriculum cycle where we're updating courses of study every five years or something like that?
So.
In different subject areas or?
So an important note on that is that we are also facing a lot of ODEW mandates. And so, for instance, coming up here very shortly, we're going to have to adopt a K through five-approved reading curriculum. So that's a state mandate at this point. We, our teachers work, for instance, in English Language Arts right now, on curriculum mapping in science and social studies at the elementary level, and so it's an ongoing process.
So I'm not sure, I probably didn't, I probably didn't ask the question very clearly.
No, we actually have a map, and we can share that with you, but it's also trying to determine how to go about, because in a five-year cycle, there are multiple adoptions for different subject areas, so.
Right.
With our capacity and trying to implement those like pilots and explorations, like there's some capacity issues in trying to maintain that schedule. We do have.
But it's a constant. I mean, it's a constant area focus across our content levels, or content areas, in terms of updating our curriculum, making sure that it reflects not only the needs of our learners, but also any new state material that's come out.
Yeah, so we do have written courses of study though?
Yes.
For each subject area?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, nice job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time. All right. Oh, okay. Oh, one quick question. Trimesters, I noticed that we're doing trimesters at Eldon and Morgan.
Yes.
Can you just give me a really quick?
Yes.
Idea of the change, yeah, thinking on that?
Yes, so we had been looking at trying to align our benchmarks with a cycle of having trimesters. And we do benchmarks and different assessments, and so we felt like that was a better match for the elementaries in order to provide the most accurate reporting data on the report cards for families, and then to be able to match up some of the intervention specialist's reporting needs with our classroom teachers' reporting needs. So it was a good fit.
Are we doing midterm reports still?
We send home data reports, so it looks a little different based on, because we do it at fourth and fifth grade too, even though they don't have a standard space report card and they're on quarters, but each elementary sends home specific reports, not necessarily like the standard report card, but assessment data based on progress monitoring.
So we basically have, there's three report cards and three of those data reports?
Yes, but the data reports are kind of ongoing, so like if you have a data report, it might not hit right in the middle of your, right in the middle of your trimester, but as we get that reported data, we send it home with families. So they just have whatever's the most current data on their child. So we do any type of assessment, that data goes home.
So in the schools where we're doing quarters, we're doing midterm reports in those buildings also?
Six through 12, and so fourth and fifth are still sending home all the assessment datas, all the assessment data as we go through each quarter.
And so in the schools where there's trimesters, are the specials 12 weeks long?
I can't answer that, yeah. It's, there's different cycles, but because we've had to reduce our staff, it looks a lot different now, and I'm not real sure how the new cycle for specials works.
Yeah.
We have that all year long, it's separate, a rotation, so I can just go to music and gym, vice versa. So they're not.
Yeah, got it. Yeah, got it, okay. 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 We don't really have a legislative report, correct?
Yeah, nothing has changed from last month, so.
Okay.
It would just be a repeat.
I did notice an article in the paper that says bipartisan property tax relief legislation will get done, and apparently, they're going to try to modify the language for homestead exemptions, it looks like, is the way they're gonna provide relief for taxpayers on that, so more people will be able to qualify for homestead exemptions. It doesn't look like they're gonna do the three-year average. They're just gonna.
Even though we got our tax bill?
Try to give people relief through the homestead exemption.
Okay. Everyone got their tax bills, right?
Oh, yeah, they've already got them, yeah, I'm just saying, going forward. Which is probably good news for the districts, because, you know, I think there was some concern that they were gonna roll back the increases, but if they give out more homestead -- But if they give out more homestead exemptions, it could impact us, but probably not as much, it looks like. I'll give that to Steve to look over as well. All right, Butler Tech report.
Butler Tech had their meeting, February meeting Tuesday night. There was a presentation by the Precision Machining Classes at Colrain and DRL. They had hosted a Precision Machining Olympics where they brought in local industry and businesses that have precision machining needs. And out of 25 seniors, 22 got job offers. They put on kind of a demonstration of running a CNC machine, different lathes, different that. And the employer could go around and talk to the kids and if they had trouble, kinda help them with it and walk through it. But through the process of putting on this kind of showcase open house, they had 22 out of 25 seniors were offered jobs that night, ranging anywhere from 18 to 22. Two juniors got offered jobs at $22 an hour to intern this summer. And they're gonna be able to work all summer and then next year when their senior year starts, they'll be able to use that as their co-op time and so forth. You think $22 an hour, if you got 50 weeks a year, that's about $44,000 without going to college and not having any student debt, that's a pretty good starting wage for some people. And so those two guys, Fox, I can't think of the guy.
Yeah, Dave Fox.
I left my, trying to get all this stuff together for Steve, I left my report at home, but that's what I remember. But it was pretty neat and it's kinda, the word's getting out about machining, kinda like welding has a high demand. They're starting to see that. And that'll lead into my next discussion. They have their lottery draft this year. They had 1,200 accepted, they have 1,230 spots available. The only open spots are in vocal music, drama, and dance. They have 1,100 students that met qualifications that got waitlisted. And as they go through that list of 1,200, they're starting to make offers and talking to the people whether they're in or out and giving them the parameters of that. Next month, we're supposed to get some data on the lottery process itself, what the comparison has been to the success the last two years during the lottery compared to when they went through the interview process and screen kids and so forth, to kinda see that, where that shakes out. They are, according to John Graff, they are accepting more kids on IEPs and so forth through the lottery process than they did through the interview. So he thinks it's a little more equitable that way. But hopefully, we get that data and we should get final enrollment numbers. That's just for the campus locations, bioscience, natural science, and DRL. That doesn't include anything else, so that's coming. I also passed out, you have the Student Success Report Newsletter. And I also gave you a copy, they adopted the district calendar last night, starting on August 8th and ending on May 20th. Butler Tech, I guess, picked the calendar that they liked similar to ours. And then if you haven't had a chance, the Ross students already had their meal out there. But Cafe Lee is open on Wednesdays and Thursdays between 11 and 1. They take cash, checks, or credit cards. The upcoming, on the 28th and 29th, they're gonna have Indian food. On the 6th and 7th of March, they're gonna have soul food. 13th and 14th, they're gonna have Italian. 20th and 21st, they're gonna have Japanese. And then they take, I think they're off probably spring break there. Then they're gonna come back with April 4th and 5th barbecue, April 11th and 12th Caribbean, and 17th and 18th is Mexican.
That's all I have. I'm curious about why they're offering programs in drama and dance. Doesn't, I don't know, I just-
They get career technical funding for it.
Okay.
And when they close, they move the School of the Arts out to their auditorium and revamp that. I guess the numbers will put out what's out there. But they're trying to compete with Fame and Cincinnati School Creative Performing Arts downtown, I guess.
Just doesn't seem to match up to me with their mission the way I would think the other offerings do. Oh, well. Interesting. Thank you, Mr. Kleinfelder, appreciate that. Public comments, we have one public participation form submitted, Jen Chu-Hawk. And subject, the comments to the board, HVAC maintenance program versus business operations supervisor HVAC tech.
Yeah, this might be addressed by Dr. Conkle when we talk about the maintenance contract, but I just wanted to know if that could be-
Hang on, okay.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to see if Dr. Conkle might talk about this, but I know back in October, there was a new position that was rewritten and created. That was the Business Operations Supervisor position with HVAC Technician, which had a job description of HVAC Maintenance. So I was just trying to figure out why a new contract, like how that plays with that position.
I can answer that. So in the past, we have spent about $80,000 a year on preventive maintenance. So we decided to, Mr. Huff kinda changed his job responsibilities. This contract that you're approving is for about $40,000 a year, so we're cutting that in half. Again, we, you know, Devin does not have the skill set to do the big-ticket items. You still have to have a company come in and do the big-ticket items. So it's a savings, and we knew when we changed Mr. Huff's job description that this was still gonna happen. Again, went from $80,000 to $40,000 and went to a competitive bid. And Peck, Hanford, and Briggs was the last, last company that got the bid. So again, we knew this was not going away, but again, in the end, it's a cost savings. Does that answer your question?
So Mr. Huff will do things like changing filters, cleaning filters-
Small items, correct.
Checking belt tensions.
Yes.
That sort of thing.
But we knew when we changed that job description, we still have to have a preventive maintenance contract.
Yeah, right. Does he do other maintenance things besides those units?
He does, yep, he'll oversee all the maintenance staff, yeah.
So he oversees the custodial staff?
That is correct.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Does that help, Mrs. Chu-Hawk?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Conkle. Okay, let's move forward with your reports and recommendations, please.
Yes, sir, I believe you wanted these individually, is that correct? Mr. Young?
Yes, please.
First item is two overnight field trips. One is the 8th grade going to Washington DC in November. And the second item is the high school mock trial team. This is exciting news that they have qualified for the state competition. I believe this is the first time ever in our district that they have qualified. So those two field trips are overnight and they need your approval.
Could you just briefly state what the mock trial is? Some people may not-
Jake, you wanna talk about that, mock trial?
Yeah, so- So mock trial is essentially what it sounds like, mock trial. And so our students are on a team and they take on roles like, you know, attorney. And I don't know the-
Witness.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so they go in with a case and they mock out, mock out a trial. And so they go and compete against other teams. And so Erica Ferris at the high school, Bill Crock, who is our SSO. And I know Heather Hudak is also very closely involved in that. They go and compete against other teams in these competitions. And so this past, I don't know if it was last weekend or the weekend before, I think it was last weekend. They beat Saint Xavier, a team from Saint Xavier, and then beat the defending state championship, champions from Tallawanda. And so that allowed them to qualify for the first time in school history to that state competition, which will happen in a couple of weeks, I believe, in Columbus. And the great thing about that is it's really, in terms of history, it's a young program at Ross. It's relatively, relatively new. But I know the supervisors, once again, Erica, Bill, and Heather have done a great job in recruiting, recruiting students to be involved in that. And they're obviously reaping the success in giving kids a great, great learning opportunity as part of that extracurricular.
Yeah, great.
How many kids are involved in that?
I don't know what the total roster is. Anybody, five?
Five.
Very, that's a very prestigious honor to get to the state level with that. I will write a letter to, to the advisors on behalf of the board, if you'd like me to, congratulating them on that.
There are eight. There are eight, there are eight members of the team. How about we'll put a range of, there are five to 10. There are five to 10 members of the team.
Right, right, okay, that's great. All right. So do we have a motion to approve those trips?
A motion to approve the trips.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we call the roll, Mr. Kleinfelder, please.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
The next item on the agenda is the preventive maintenance contract for Peck, Hanford, and Briggs. This is a five-year contract. And just to note, this does not come out of the general fund. This was being paid for out of the permanent improvement account. So Peck, Hanford, and Briggs, for your approval, please.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the contract?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, do we have any discussion about it?
I'd just like to point out, you know, this wasn't just something that was brought out, you know, being part of the Facilities Subcommittee. It was one of my first times there and there is a process to it. It's not just, we picked them out of nowhere. There was a lot of thought that went into it, so I just wanted to say it was a good decision. You know, coming from the outside in, I thought that was very well thought through.
Yeah, we went through a competitive bidding process. I think we had eight or nine companies have bid, which is good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's five years, right?
It is, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well.
Okay, a motion passes 5-0.
The following item are personnel items. The first item is the substitute agenda, substitute salary schedule. The only change here is the school security officer that was added. The second item, there is a resolution for your approval to hire a substitute SSO. We will send an email out tomorrow to staff with his picture. David Pratt is a retired police officer in the county. He's a Ross grad, 1979. So I'll send an email to staff tomorrow with his picture. So staff members will see who he is and we're glad to have Mr. Pratt. And this is just a resolution to make that official. And then finally, there are schedules A, B, C, and D for your approval.
So the, Mr. Pratt only gets paid when he subs, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the personnel items?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Mrs. Webb? That means I've got me on two pages here. Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, 5-0, carries.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Conkle. Are you gonna go through the treasures?
I will, yes, sir. Do you want those items together or individually?
Together's fine.
Okay. So the first item is a donation to Morgan Elementary from, it's anonymous, but it's for the Nancy Godby Fund. The second item is the Red Tree Investments, you have a copy of those. And finally, treasures report, you have the cash summary and then also the monthly revenue and expenditure. So items A, B, and C for your approval.
Okay. Anybody on the Finance Committee have anything to add to any of those?
No.
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Call the roll, please, Mr. Kleinfelder.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
And me, yes, 5-0, carries.
Okay. I'd just like to go around the table before we wrap up to see if board members have any comments or information they'd like to share. We'll start here with Mrs. Webb.
Just a couple of things, I wanna thank Jake and Tracy for providing these presentations to us. It was, it was very informative tonight and hearing it now for, you know, second time. For me, I mean, it sinks in. And what I really liked yesterday about us talking about ABRE for parents is that it really is a warehouse of your child. And you can go all the way back to when they started taking assessments in the district. So like with me having like, you know, two that are in high school, I can go all the way back to elementary. So I really like that and I have gotten into that. So thank you for that information. Wanted to wish all the winner athletes best of luck as they go into like their tournament games. I know there's a boys' basketball game tonight and the girls have started. And if I'm not mistaken, do we have some swimmers also going?
To state, yes.
State as well, so yeah, best of luck to them. And I know like from my end with Butler Tech and DECA, we also have several students. And I wish I had the exact number, but I think like Mrs. Miller that teaches business here at Ross has like 20 some students that's also gonna be going to state the same time that the mock trial team is going to state. So best of luck to everybody all around, it's just an exciting time. Thanks.
Great, thank you, appreciate that information very much. Mr. Beckman?
Yeah, I just wanna, I wanna thank Jake and Tracy again for coming in. You had a lot of really good information. I think, I think you've got a lot of information at your fingertips too, which is great. And I'm sure you could've sat here all night and talked numbers with us and everything else. But I did notice you didn't go back to 2002. So, you know, that was a good year, that was a good year. But, but no, thanks again.
Mr. Gunther?
Sure, once again, thank you. I got a chance this past week to talk to Dr. Conkle and Steve over some of the academic calendar stuff. I know it's still, still a topic, we've had multiple discussions on it. And you know, to Keith's point, it's important that we put these, you know, the following year's academic calendar out. You know, although we can't make any changes this year, you know, next year is still in our hands and within grasp. So you know, the idea like Dr. Conkle was saying, you know, getting a collaboration with the community and also with the teachers and staff. So you know, next month, I'd like to try to put something together as far as questions, you know, that we can ask the public and questions that we can ask teachers. And we'll try to collaborate with that. And then hopefully, put something out on a newsletter like we discussed before. When is the next newsletter coming out?
I think the goal is May.
May, okay, so that should be able to, you know, get enough questions together, think about what we really wanna ask and then get it out into the public's eyes and get some good responses back with hopefully an end goal of, you know, August or September, having an academic calendar out for the following year. Because that's, in my experience at my previous job, that's when people had to start making decisions on next year's vacations. So that's just my two cents on it.
Okay, appreciate that input and I think-
That's a good idea, Brent, I like that, getting that calendar out early, I like that.
In two years.
I'll take one two years out. But thanks for, Jake and Tracy for putting that curriculum together. It's always nice to talk about student achievement and success and academics versus some of the other things that distract us from time to time, so. And then good luck to all the sports teams and hopefully get some second rounds out of some people.
Great. Yes, thank you again, presentation, well done. I think sometimes we feel like we're drinking from a fire hose. We're getting this, all this data's coming at us. And so we'll have an opportunity to look through it. And if anybody has any questions you wanna ask specific to things, you know, I would direct those questions to Dr. Conkle so he can get you an answer if you have some additional questions about anything there and- questions about anything there, and so, we appreciate that very much. I did have something I wanted to share, the, in the business section of the Inquirer, this was last Sunday's Inquirer, it says, "New Thunderdome Restaurant Opens on Fountain Square," and so, Thunderdome is the outfit that has done several other well-known restaurants in Cincinnati. The Eagle is Thunderdome Restaurant, and so is Pep and Dolores, which are two very popular restaurants, well-done. The interesting thing about this is, and why I mention it, is one of the partners is Alex Blust, who is a Ross High School graduate, and I was trying to think what year he graduated, I think it was like late 90s, early?
Late, yeah.
Yeah, perhaps, and I remember Alex as I think a student council president, maybe, but he got hooked up with these guys out of high school and in his college, and they have built this successful restaurant empire, so, I just thought I'd mention that, it's always good to see Ross kids doing well, and that's a pretty big deal there, there, I don't know what his net worth is, but I think that next time we need something, we might've talked to Alex about maybe he could help us out with the donation or something, and he'd get a laugh out of that, I'm sure. Okay, so, there's no further business for this evening, I'm gonna entertain a motion to go into executive session, we would be going into, yes?
Point of order, Mr. Castator told me we should adjourn this meeting and then vote to go into executive session, so we don't have to have the vote at the end.
I would think we would adjourn, come out of executive and then adjourn the meeting.
Just going by the order that's here in front of me, but-
Well, we'll follow Mr. Castator's order of business then. I don't agree with that, but we'll do it for now, doesn't matter that much. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
And me, I will vote yes as well.
Okay, so, we do have, I don't know how we make a motion to go into executive session when we're out, we've adjourned, but at any rate, we'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel. When we come out of executive session, no action will be taken, so everyone can feel free to leave, we won't be taking any action after our executive session. So, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. I'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, five oh, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you again, everyone, for being here, we appreciate your support, and come back and see us again.